Good evening, welcome to the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education meeting for January eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. We have a motion to go into executive session to discuss the employment history of particular pedagogical and non-pedagogical employees, and matters made confidential under federal law, the Federal, the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, thank you. Alright, can I have a motion to go back into public session?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good evening, welcome to the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education meeting for January eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. Will please stand by the pledge of allegiance led by our Mohansick students, and remain standing for a moment of silence for our armed forces and those that are community of lost loved ones. Especially remember the Yorktown Town Supervisor Tom Diana, the brother of Roxanna Nito, and the father-in-law of Jennifer Newman.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We apologize for coming out so late and we thank you for waiting patiently for us. Dr. Hatter, I believe we have some wonderful Mohansick students here today?
Yes, we have some great news, not just good news tonight. Mohansick students, it's so nice to see you here tonight. We have Mohansick faculty and staff, thank you so much for being here. We appreciate you taking the time to attend the Board of Education meeting to support the good work happening in the classrooms, and the great work of our students. Families, again, we apologize for coming out late, we know it's a Monday night, we know you have routines, we know there's a national championship football game that's on at some point this evening. So, we thank you for, for being here, for bringing your children out tonight. And at this point, I would like to welcome, is Ms. Dable you're going to introduce? Alright, I'd like to welcome Ms. Dable to the podium to introduce this evening's presentation.
Good evening, Dr. Hatter, Mrs. Emmerling, Mrs. Carbone, members of our Board of Education, members of our administration, colleagues, and families. My name is Antonella Dable, and I'm delighted to be here tonight with some of our Mohansick's kindergarten, first and second grade students. Tonight, we will explore and share the transformative power of social emotional learning, and discover how it is creating strong relationships and fostering a sense of connectedness among our students at Mohansick. To help share some of this incredible work, I want to introduce Lauren Pocher, one of our speech and language pathologists, who will share a little bit more about this incredible endeavor that she started this year.
Thank you, Mrs. Dable. Good evening, everyone. My name is Lauren Pocher, and I am one of the speech-language pathologists here at Mohansick. Mrs. Vidal and I are extremely excited and proud to be here tonight with all of you to share about Mohansick's Friday Fun Club. Both Mrs. Vidal and I were new to Yorktown last year, but we quickly bonded over our desire to advocate for our students. Friday Fun Club was established with the goal of creating inclusivity and connectedness between our students and our Mohansick community. From the outside, Friday Fun Club is just what it sounds like. A Friday afternoon filled with fun activities while the students have fun working and being together. But the wonderful thing about this club is that it is so much more. Students have the opportunity to learn about and actively engage in essential life skills such as empathy, compassion, acceptance, leadership, kindness, and teamwork. Our second grade students embrace their roles as peer leaders, and of course, many speech-language pathologists, as they facilitated modeling language and social skills for the students in Mrs. Vidal's class. I am so proud to be part of this club and have the opportunity to work with all these amazing students. Now, to share more on our journey through this process, we will start with a student from Mrs. Dable's class. They will share a little more about what Friday Fun Club is all about.
Hi, my name is Michael Pastor. I was so excited to be a part of Friday Fun Club. I bet you are wondering what that is. It is a buddy program where we go to Mrs. V's classroom and join her students for some fun friendship. We practice together in song stories and fun games. The first thing we did before visiting Mrs. V's class, we met up with Mrs. Pocher, so we could learn about what we were going to be doing. We listened to a story called "The Day With No Words" by Tiffany Hammond. In this story, we met a boy named Aiden who has autism and is non-verbal. This story gives us a glimpse into the daily life of this young boy, who uses an assistive device to express his words and thoughts. We learned more about how he interacts with people and his reactions to the world around him. I learned that one thing that you need to do to be a good buddy is knowing how you, how you feel and understanding how your friend feels too. It's like having a friendship superpower.
Hi, my name is Samantha DiMaggio. The next thing we did was talk about ways that we were going to be good buddies to our new friends, and what that might look like. We talked about ways that we can be kind to our friends, even if things get a little tricky. Having relationship skills is important. They are the tools we use in our friendships every day. They include things like sharing, taking turns, and being a good listener. That isn't always easy, especially if you don't know how others feel. But being a good buddy means being patient and kind. How we speak to a person is super important too. But words are not the only way we can communicate with each other. Our facial gestures and our body language are other ways we can show others how we are feeling. Can you guess what I'm feeling now?
Hi, my name is Maxwell. We were so excited to go into Mrs. V's classroom. As soon as we got there, we all got together to sing a hello song. After that, Mrs. Pocher and Mrs. V modeled ways in which we could say hello to our new friends. They introduced four different ways you can greet someone to say hello. We then had our buddies pick a greeting and say hi and hello to each other the way they wanted to. We could wave, give a handshake, a high five, or even say hello. For some of our friends, they are non-verbal. They use a device called the AAC, Augmented Alternate Communication Device. I know those are big fancy words, but it is just a tool that we can, that can be used to help us say what we want without using our voices. My buddy chose to say hello by giving a high five.
Hi, my name is Aria. In Friday Fun Club, Mrs. V introduced the theme of the month. That month was Thanksgiving. Since my group went in November, the teacher showed us a craft that we were going to work on together. We discussed questions we can ask our buddy and ways to help each other throughout the craft. For example, I can ask, "Which sticker would you like to add?" "Where should we put this decoration?" "Do you like this sticker?" We made Thanksgiving picture frames that required us to work together to pick the decoration for the frame. I helped support my buddy to make a decision by asking our guiding questions and working together to make the craft.
Hi, my name is Brianna Garcia. After our craft, we took part in game time. The teachers modeled how buddies can help each other while working together to play a game. The teach, each pair of buddies were given a game from the classroom. We set up the game and reviewed the rules and showed how to take turns, how to take turns as well as good sportsmanship. We did that by saying things like "nice game" and "good try." We could also give up, put a high five or a put-up compliment. My favorite game was Yeti and Spaghetti, and I think my buddy had just as much fun too. I know this because I saw him smile.
Hi, my name is Isabella Ingersony. The last thing we did was finding the best way to say goodbye to each other. By picking one of four options again, my buddy and I chose to wave goodbye. I learned a lot about being a good friend. It's when you laugh, share, listen, care, and stand up for each other. Friendship is like having a forever buddy. It's like the feeling that you are part of something where everyone is accepted no matter what. And that is pretty awesome. I was so glad I got to be part of this special club. And now, when I see my buddy in the hallway, I know ways to say hello. We will always be connected now by our new friendship.
And now I'd like to introduce Ms. Kat Vidal.
Good evening. My name is Kat Vidal, and I am the eight-one-two K-one classroom teacher at Mohansick. There are many key components to building relationships and connectedness. Tonight, you were able to see how we have worked to create a positive supportive environment that fosters healthy relationships as well as encourages collaboration amongst our students. Empathy, understanding, and inclusive practices are key elements to building these strong relationships. Our Friday Fun Club helps students develop compassion, appreciate the perspectives of others, and truly promotes a sense of community. We are grateful that you gave us this opportunity to share this with you tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Vidal. I have to say that none of this work would be possible without the support of our administration, the school board, and our teachers that are here tonight. And I'd like to recognize them by asking them to stand. Ms. Pocher, Ms. Vidal, our phenomenal eight-one-two CTA staff, Mrs. Gammert, Mrs. Dance, Mrs. Andonian, Mrs. Munson, and Mrs. Bissett. And I also want to recognize some of our other teachers and staff that are here tonight, if you can please stand too. Ms. Price, Mrs. Wright, Ms. Lampert, Mrs. Giorgio, Mrs. Joyce, Ms. McMahon, Mrs. Ryan. Did I get everybody that's here? And of course, Mrs. Romer. Thank you. We are very fortunate to have such a great team. On behalf of our Mohansick family, we want to thank you for giving us this opportunity to share our work with you tonight. Thank you.
That, that was incredible. Absolutely incredible. Students, I'm going to talk to you for a moment. This is what I heard you say. Sharing, taking turns, patience, kindness, friendship, our words matter, saying hello, being accepting of everyone. That is really, really amazing, what you've learned. I hope you carry that with you always. That is absolutely terrific, and I am so proud of you. Teachers, thank you for your vision. You have a lot of work during the course of a school day. ELA, math, social studies, science, but this is important. This is really important, and I appreciate you bringing this opportunity to our students. And when I say teachers, I'm referring to all of the staff who took part, and certainly the administration in the building. Parents, thank you for sharing your children with us. Your support is incredible, and it's a partnership. You're their first teachers, you're their best teachers, and we appreciate you entrusting their learning to us during the school day. And it's something that we take very seriously. What I do want to point out is something else that you may not have seen with the focus on so many wonderful areas, but I do point this out often during presentations of students. The public speaking. Your children stood up in front of a podium with confidence, and they read beautifully. And they went up to that podium in front of an audience of many faces that are unfamiliar to them, and they spoke confidently, they spoke well, they showed off their reading skills to us tonight as well. And I am so proud of that component as well. So students, I'm so proud of you. Teachers, thank you for everything you're doing. Parents, thank you for your partnership. It's not easy to come out on a Monday night. You've just started your work week, you've just got the routines, there are bedtime routines, maybe homework, maybe not, hopefully not homework tonight. But there are other responsibilities and routines that you have, and we appreciate you spending part of your evening with us tonight. Thank you, it truly is our honor.
Thank you, this is really special. And I think a lot of my board members would like to say some things to the kids, so I'm going to start over with Lisa, because I know she wants to say something.
How did you know? So, boys and girls, that was amazing. There are so many adults who are afraid to stand up there and speak, and you guys did it, and you guys did it amazingly. So, thank you for doing that. The lessons that you shared with us are more important than any spelling lesson or math lesson. What you learned was how to be a good person, and that's really the most important thing, so thank you for sharing that with us.
Sure.
I think that was a wonderful presentation. And one word you left out, Dr. Hatter, was empathy, right? Empathy is such an important part of how we treat people, to being able to understand how other people feel, and being able to walk in their shoes. I think it's so important that all this information that you told us about came through tonight, because we can teach languages, but the biggest part that I walked away with today was, it's not what you say, it may be how you say it or how you express yourself. And before we learned French and Spanish and second, third, fourth languages, it's important to know that whatever the language is that we're learning, maybe in middle school or high school, that how you present yourself, how you speak, and how you treat other people is equally, if not more, important. So that's a big part of communication and making friends. So I think this was a wonderful lesson. Thank you for coming out tonight.
I wanted to say I loved learning more about your Friday Fun Club. You know, you did a great job speaking here tonight and reminding me that there are more than, there is more than one way to say hello. And I know I tend to say the same way every day. So, thank you for reminding me that there is more than one way, and a great job tonight. And to our staff, really, I mean, there's so many of you here on a Monday, on a school night. You know, thank you for being here and for supporting the students.
Well, obviously, I echo everybody's sentiment. This is always the highlight of our evening, when we get to see our students in action, and you guys were fantastic tonight. So thank you for that. The confidence that you exude, you truly are leaders in the school, and it's really great to see. And thank you to the staff and parents for coming out tonight. I know it's cold out there, and there's a lot of other things you probably would like to do, but we really, truly appreciate seeing all of the hard work in action, so thank you.
Everybody did such a great job, and I think we see a lot of future teachers. I saw that you guys play games, I love Pop the Pig. And everybody just did an amazing job speaking, and thank you to all the staff, thank you for introducing this, and hopefully more classes will also do this, thank you.
Thank you to the staff for all coming out. And the one thing I love is, is when the children are speaking, picking out the parents, and watching their faces as their child speaks. So, it's so great to see. And you, children, your public speaking ability is amazing. And I look forward to watching you through your years, so thank you so much for all coming out.
Yes, thank you, thank you. The one thing we can never teach is how to be kind, and that's what you all are, and that makes you really, really special children, so thank you. Thank you, everybody, thank you staff for coming out.
So, we have a full meeting ahead of us, I'm giving two presentations, one on the bond, one on two thousand and twenty-three. What we'll do, you're welcome to stay, but what we'll do is we'll take a brief five-minute intermission. We'll allow everyone to depart if you choose for the night, you're welcome to stay. But we'll take a brief five-minute intermission for anyone who wants to depart. But I would love a picture with the students before they go. So, can we take a picture?
Okay, are we back? Alright, we are up to, that was amazing. Those kids are just so special. We're up to our first public comment, have that, did anybody sign up? No, okay, so we're going to move right into our superintendent's report, Ron?
Okay, we have two presentations this evening, but before I open that presentation, I do want to acknowledge the tragic passing of our town supervisor. On January fifth, our town suffered a tremendous loss in the passing of Supervisor Tom Diana. He was a great friend to our school district, a great friend to me. He was always available to me, to us, always willing to support our schools and whatever our schools needed. And we will sorely miss him. And we observed a moment of silence earlier, but I also wanted to acknowledge the friend he was to our school district. And I'll transition from the, those words of sadness to words of gratitude, to our operations and maintenance crew. They did a phenomenal job of preparing the campus for student and staff arrival this morning. They worked through the day yesterday, clearing the snow, making sure that the conditions on the campus were safe. When I got in my car at four-thirty this morning to drive around, they beat me on campus, and all the campuses were already salted prior to my arrival, which is truly impressive. It's a testament to their commitment to our district, and I'm just so grateful to the entire O and M staff, led by the Director of Facilities, Dennis Forboys. So, I will now transition to two presentations that I'll be delivering. The first presentation was initially scheduled for our December, our last December board meeting. However, there was just some inclement weather that we were working through, which you may recall on the eighteenth. And we made the determination to abbreviate the meeting by moving presentations to later dates. So, this presentation, the two thousand and twenty-three year-end review, review presentation will be delivered this evening. The other presentation, which was an education report on a joint venture between our PPS department and Technology Department, will be delivered at the February fifth, I believe that's the next board meeting after the twenty-second. So that'll be delivered at the first February meeting. I will make my way over to the podium to share two presentations. So at the end of each calendar year, I like to provide our board and certainly our community with an update on the happenings in our school district from each of our departments. So with the two thousand and twenty-three year, that's, there's no difference. And I'd like to offer that presentation to you now. I'll begin with our mission statement and our vision statement. Our vision statement guides the work that we do here. We established this vision statement several years ago, and it holds true today. And I think our good news presentation certainly captured that sentiment. The work of our district is also led by the areas of focus as set by our Board of Education. There are six areas of focus that our district is committed to working on this year. Communications, cultural awareness and equity, next level of esteem, fiscal responsibility, student connectedness, and student wellness. However, there have been so many more happenings during this year. We introduced our pre-K program. It feels like it was so long ago, but pre-K is in its first year. We introduced this concept of I-grants, which I'll come back to. And we've introduced a capital bond project to our community, which I'll be presenting immediately following this presentation. But a word about the innovation grants, they've been quite exciting. One of the themes of our school year this year is telling your story, and being able to listen for someone else's story. So, we encouraged our faculty and staff to tell their story and tie it to the curriculum. And we're awarding grants each month, and the grants provide learning opportunities for our students that may not have been there in the regular scope of our operating budget. And some of the projects that have been funded have been truly exciting. I will tell you that my personal favorite was the Blue Path Service Dogs in all of our eight-one-two classes. The service dog visits have been the highlight of the school year for many classes. It teaches many of the characteristics we discussed here tonight. Friendship, kindness, being able to express oneself, and we're truly the better for it. But we've also seen some other really creative projects take hold. Disney Imagineering is something that is remarkable, especially coming from an ELA class. That idea of engineering and telling the story of one's vision. We're looking at flexible seating at our high school, another exciting opportunity that would not have been there within the scope of our regular budget. A sustainable garden at Mohansick, similar to Crompond and Brookside now. Mental health awareness is such an important part of what we do, looking at the whole child. And we're looking at a fifteen-for-life mental health awareness campaign at the middle school. And when I share this idea of a coffee cart in our twelve-one-two classroom at Brookside, it's for children in grades, essentially grades two and three. And what it is, is it's assisting students in social interactions and building up the conversation ability. Looking at mathematics, because they will be charging for the coffee, and being able to make change. Being able to package, practice fine motor skills by packaging sugar into Ziploc bags and making those deliveries. Being able to take an order and fulfill the order, and looking at that process. So, just such a special experience and opportunity that the I-grants have created. And there are more coming, and we'll certainly have some of those grants presented at the end of our school year. We also introduced school resource officers in all of our schools this year. That has been a big part of our work, is acclimating the SROs to our school district, acclimating our students to now having an SRO in the building. While it might seem like a seamless transition, there's a lot of work that goes on to make that transition a seamless one. And our school resource officers have been absolutely phenomenal. We have introduced new courses. We have some really, really exciting opportunities for our students, and the focus always remains on the academics. We have a drone course that we've introduced, and it's something that's so exciting. We've provided our students with real-world, hands-on, authentic learning experiences, whether it's visiting a pond, or visiting a conservatory, or going on virtual field trips. Our students have engaged in authentic learning in all aspects of our curriculum. With regard to our curriculum updates, on the left column, and I won't read all the bullets to you. The presentation will be posted for the community to review. Certainly, the board has seen the presentation. But on the left side, those are things that we have worked on in two thousand and twenty-three, made some good progress, completed in some regards, and continue to work on in others. For example, the posting of curricula to our website. That's ongoing. Yes, there's a product posted, but that's a living, breathing website that will continue to evolve. So although I put it in year-end review, it's been completed, it's never-ending. As there are updates to the curriculum, and there are often updates to our curricula, we'll certainly post those. And looking ahead to two thousand and twenty-four, artificial intelligence is certainly something on our minds. We've begun cohorts in our middle school and high school to be able to really tackle the issue of AR, AI, and determine the role of AI in our classrooms. The new course implementations, making sure those courses are implemented smoothly. We're going to continue curriculum development in all areas, and certainly the data dashboard that was presented at a prior board meeting, looking to really roll that out and implement that in our schools. So, lots of work happening in the area of curriculum and instruction. In athletics, there also is a lot of work happening. Again, two thousand and twenty-three was a terrific year for our athletics program. We're looking forward to two thousand and twenty-four. We have really set the standard for streaming of sports broadcasts in this district. We do such an incredible job. Brian Mundie, SRO Brian Mundie at Crompond is the voice of the Huskers. He's the voice on the broadcast, and he's done just a tremendous job. It's a talent that we didn't know he had until he demonstrated. Apparently, he studied that as an undergraduate in college, and it's paying dividends for him today. But he brings such an experience in the event that a family member's not able to attend a game in person. He brings such, such a great viewing experience home. We're looking at the feasibility of modified sports. That was a conversation that we had previously, so we'll continue to look at that. We'll provide more of an update at the next meeting. We'll provide more of an update at the next meeting. We are certainly looking at the facilities and making sure that our facilities can meet the demands of our programs, not just athletic programs, but PE and recess at the middle Facilities is an area that we've spent a lot of time on this year as we prepare for a bond vote on February 13th. So we've done some wonderful things. Those are all on the left side of the column. I do want to just give a quick acknowledgement for the pre-K facility preparing that our department, that our ONM department undertook this summer. Mr. Verbois and his team, single-handedly, made upgrades to French Hill to ready that building to welcome pre-K. Certainly, it lacks the technology infrastructure that all of our schools have. It lacks the security vestibules and some of the other infrastructure that would be needed if we had a full bus run going to the building. But for a pre-K program where they don't have smart boards and there's no need for Wi-Fi, and we don't have tablets, it's all hands-on learning, they did a tremendous job in readying the classrooms for 120 children. We'll continue to look ahead in 2024. The projects on the right, those are four items that I noted, but I'm sure our community knows, and I know for certain our board knows, there are so many more than four items that our facilities department is working on in 2024. I hit some of the real high point items and some of the larger items that we'll be looking at. The boiler re tubing actually is underway. That actually already has begun just this week. The Dora Jar sensors, we're continuing to implement blue light technology. So right above my head for those on camera is a blue strobe light. That's all part of our continued commitment to safety and security in this district. That's a next level of our work, is having these non-audio, these visual cues to alert students and staff of a lockdown in high noise environments. And certainly, a cafeteria during lunch is a high noise environment, so the announcements may not come through clearly, but seeing that blue strobe light flashing is certainly an indicator that we're going into a lockdown situation. Human Resources and Dr. McGinnis is here with us this evening, continues to excel at their work. Again, all of the items on the left side of the column represent work that they have completed, but they continue to do. The work of HR is ongoing. Recruiting, hiring, making sure that our processes and protocols are efficient and accurate continues to be our work. We have continued to expand our candidate pool by participating in various job fairs, including a diversity, diversity hiring fair, and we've been posting on college websites. We've looked at different platforms to recruit candidates. So we're ongoing in that area, and I owe my thanks to Dr. McGinnis for her leadership in the department. And we also have several labor groups that we work with, and the work of HR in those areas are, is paramount. Our pupil personnel services update. Ms. Almeida is here, our Director of PPS. So much in the way of PPS is responding to the needs of the students, and few do it better than Caroline does. We were able to assess the needs, forecast the needs, and build programs to service our students, and it's something that I'm quite proud of. So we'll continue to look at our CSE, CPSC 504 processes, looking at those referrals, trying to come up with a trend or a pattern with regard to the needs of our district in terms of staffing and how many classes we'll need and what staff we'll need to hire moving forward and what programs we'll need to offer, and continuing to do that work moving forward. So that is something that Caroline and certainly Kelly Rudic, who is the Assistant Director in the department, do better than anyone I know. Technology continues to drive a lot of the work that we do. We have so many initiatives that we have underway. Those are on the left side. Again, not ending, so when I say 2023 year in review, yes, we've accomplished so many of these things, but they're ongoing. The cameras, we're on phase seven of our camera installation. There will probably, probably be a phase eight, nine, and 10 before the end of this school year as we identify areas of need within our district for coverage. As we look to the right, they partner with every department in our district, whether it's facilities, PPS, curriculum. They are just such an integral role under the leadership of Ms. Forsberg. Our MacBook Pilot has expanded. I would say one out of two teachers have a MacBook at this point. Many at the secondary level have MacBooks, and that's where, that's where they're predominantly distributed, but certainly at the elementary level, the pilot is alive and running. And we're continuing to replace aging infrastructure. We were one of the first districts to move into the smart board technology many years ago. We were one of the first districts to move into these new screens, and as you're first in, your equipment goes bad first. So we're on a great, great replenishment cycle, being responsible to taxpayers certainly, but making sure that our teachers have the equipment that they need to service the needs of our students in the classroom. And then I saved the business office for, toward the end of the presentation because this all has to get paid for somehow. And what the business office does is manage all of the needs of the district. We aggregate the various buildings and departmental needs, the student needs, certainly drive most of the budget that we have here. And the business office ensures, number one, that we're positioned to be able to fund the programs that we're looking to implement and to make sure that all of the expenditures day to day are done in a responsible way in accordance with the governmental accounting laws. And our audits have been absolutely superb in, in at least every year that I can look back to, our audits have been absolutely superb. So my, my thanks to Ms. Sam Filippo and her team. And we're going to continue to do this. We're looking at the bond project on February 13th. That will be another layer for the business office to manage through the second half of this year, certainly into next year. We have two open contracts that we're looking to finalize and negotiations, so that's something that we certainly have an eye on. And then we have a transportation contract and a food service contract that we'll be bidding. So certainly, lots of work that the business office is moving through. And then to answer the question that my son asked me, Dad, what do you do at work? What's your job? What does a superintendent do? What if I wanted to be one? What would I do? And my role is essentially having a hand in each one of those areas. Setting, charting the course, setting the vision, and then being able to work through teaching and learning, that's always number one. That's most important here, right with safety and security. And then working through the budget development process, supervision of staff, and I'm not going to go down the list, but it's being able to participate in the work of all of the departments and having an understanding of the work of all of the departments and being able to drive forward the work of all of the departments. And I will say, and not just because they're here, but it's a joy to work with this team. It's a tremendous team, and it's a tremendous board. Our board is absolutely phenomenal. Their support and their oversight of this district is really second to none. I've worked with boards, not just here, but in my previous district. This is a really, really great board to work with, and it's a great, great team that we have at Central Office, so my thanks to the team, both those who are here and those who aren't here this evening. With regard to the budget development process, the process has begun, and it has begun in earnest. We begin our planning late November, early December is when we begin our planning in earnest. And then in January and February, starting in January, actually, we have departmental meetings with each department head, each principal. They tell us exactly what they need. We aggregate that list of needs. We aggregate the list of wants. We determine what we can reasonably fund, what we can't fund, and that all is guided by the vision for our district. What's best for children is what always guides that vision. And so in March and April, and actually late February, we'll make presentations to the board, we'll make presentations to the community. It's a fully transparent process. All of the presentations are posted to our website. The detail is posted to our website. It's all there for our community to take in, to review, to ask questions on. We're happy to answer those questions and certainly hear feedback and suggestions. The budget adoption happens in the spring, and that ultimately takes us to May 21st, which is the budget vote and trustee election. And so between now and then, we have some things that we know we need to do. Number one, we need to continue to get better. That's, that's just one area that I feel strongly about, my team feels strongly about. We have to get better every day. We've got to get better. And so our goal in developing the budget process is how do we get better? How do we continue to better our district in every capacity, in every regard? Not just in teaching and learning, but how do we do security cameras better? How do we do cleaning better? So it's looking at every aspect of our organization and just how do we do better? Focus on space needs. Space needs are a real situation that we're dealing with. We are short on space, and that's a perfect segue into the next presentation that I'll be giving, but we are short on space, and that is a challenge for us each year as we introduce new programs. We need to house those programs somewhere, and that's a perpetual challenge for us, and it, the challenge only compounds itself until we can hopefully get a bond pass that will provide us some additional space. And then we'll continue to build a budget, a responsible budget that balances the needs of our students with sensitivity to the taxpayer. It's something that we've always been mindful of, the tax rate increase in our community, and it's something that we'll continue to be mindful of as we develop the budget for fiscal year '24, '25. So that concludes the presentation that I had for, for the board this evening and for our community this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions. Any member of our team can also accept any questions that you may have.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Pete, you want to start? Catalina?
I just have one question.
In the, in the microphone?
I know. I'm sorry. Maybe I shouldn't speak. It's my voice. But when you say we need space and hopefully, you know, with the budget and we're building new space, but for the coming year, are the, is the administrator's already talking about where to put?
Yes. So your point's a good one. We need space, and we need space now. A bond is a few years away. Even if it were to pass on February 13th, what will we do in the interim? And that's where Dennis's office has been terrific. They have literally, in a summer, put up walls to partition classrooms to create small group instruction spaces. They've taken down walls and converted offices to classrooms. They have done, our in-house crew have done an incredible job of taking the footprint that we have, albeit limited, and giving us options. And the reality is the needs are such and the enrollment is such that we're running out of how many configurations and how many ways we can cut a room in half and take away a partition to make a full-size room. We're running very low on those options. So this year, we're not at the point where we've assessed the space for the programmatic needs, but I anticipate it'll be the most challenging year that we've had because the options remaining are few. But thank you for that question. It drives the point home for the bond. Thank you.
Mike? Rashby?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Cheryl?
Yeah, I have just a comment. One of the comments that you ended with was that we continue to try to do better. And it's funny, because as I was following your presentation, I would look at the left side of your slides as it said 2023 in review, and we'd see areas like curriculum, technology, security. And when you shift to the right side of your slides, it said looking ahead to 2024, and it would oftentimes list the same categories. And what that stated to me was that although we've done great in 2023, and this is a common theme with every year, we look to do even better next year. Because I don't think the areas change. We're always going to have technology in front of us, security issues. Curriculum is our number one area that we should be focusing on, which of course we are. Those things, those areas don't change, so we have to always look to do better. So I thank you for that, and I thank our administrative team and our whole staff for always keeping that in mind, that we're always looking to do better.
Lisa?
No question. Just a thank you. Thank you to you, your entire team. They come out every board meeting. It's really appreciated. Their dedication to the district is not unnoticed, so thank you.
And Cheryl, you're spot on that the, the areas don't change. So thank you for that observation, but yes, it's the goal of continuously trying to get better. Technology is going to be there. We'll be replacing, we'll be ordering, but yes, just continuously trying to improve is really the goal, so I appreciate you pointing that out.
Absolutely. So I have two questions and a comment. Do we have any idea if pre-K will be funded next year? Is that anything? I know we're, our fingers crossed, but we won't know yet.
We don't, we don't know for certain at this point. We'll see the governor's proposed budget, I'm guessing, in the coming months. Certainly, I hope before April 1st, because that's when the budget's due, but I'm hoping soon we'll have some runs of state aid, because that will be the driver of our capacity for pre-K. I don't anticipate a reduction. There has been no discussion out of Albany that there will be a reduction in that allocation, but we won't know for certain until we see a proposed budget, and I'm hoping that sooner rather than later.
Okay. And then the second question is under technology. Have we done, are we, have we done or are we doing a study on our wireless capacity? Because I know the more devices we put in, the more we are testing the system, and I know that there tends to still be dead areas in the buildings.
So those are two different things. So the first part in terms of capacity and bandwidth, we're well within our limits, what our, what our capability is, we're well within. We actually monitored that. We began monitoring during COVID, and when we went on remote instruction and we had the hybrid model, we began monitoring our bandwidth. We actually increased our bandwidth. And so we now, so we weren't, we weren't hitting our peak at that point in terms of what we could do, and we're certainly not there with regard to our bandwidth and our capacity. In terms of coverage and saturation of coverage across the buildings, that's something that has been somewhat problematic for us, and we're actually looking at this idea of what's called a repeater, a cell phone repeater within the building. So those are costly, those are costly, but they will be factored into our budget presentation for the coming school year.
Okay. And then my comment is, I had the opportunity to see the Blue Path Dogs when they went to Mohansick, and to see the joy on the kids' faces, and some of the comments from some of the staff when these kids were interacting with the dogs is, you know, this is a student who wouldn't even use their assistant device to speak, got to the dog and was speaking. And it was just, the connection that they had with the animal was just such an incredible experience to watch, to see how important it was, and not just for, for them emotionally, but even for the, the teaching and the learning. Deidre, you were there, it was just an incredible experience. So thank you for granting those I grants and bringing that program, and it was so special to see.
Hey, Jack. Can I just, one comment? Listening to what Lisa and Cheryl said, and within your presentation, Dr. Hatter, you talked about superintendent oversight and telling your son what you do, and you're way too humble. You manage roughly a $100 million company, 700-plus employees. You are truly a servant leader, and where you give the credit to your people, and you take responsibility when something goes wrong, never placing blame. And that's, we're fortunate to have you. We truly are. So thank you and your administration for everything you do. It really made me, as people were talking, made me think, so thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll transition to the next presentation.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay. So this presentation will look familiar to everyone. It's very similar to the presentation that was previously presented by the architects at a, at the December 4th Board of Education meeting, December 4th Board of Education meeting. There are some subtle changes. This will be the presentation, and I'd like to take the opportunity to extend an invitation to members of our school community to come out to the various forums that we're going to be holding. We'll be holding several community information sessions, and so we would love to have the community come out. We'll be providing those dates. I believe tomorrow we'll send those dates out to the community. It'll be a letter from me with dates for forums. We tried to vary the dates. The first will actually be this Saturday at 10:00 a.m. right here in the middle school cafeteria, and then we'll have dates every week. We really want the community to come out. We tried to vary the day of the week. We tried to vary the time, the format, so there are some at 10:00 a.m., there are some at 7:00 p.m., there are some during the week, there's one on Saturday. So we really want the community to come out, engage, and we're trying to build the information sessions that provide as much access regardless of one's schedule. And certainly, the Board of Education meetings are another venue where we'll be sharing our presentations. So the presentation will be similar, but again, there are some subtle differences with some additional details from previous presentations. So we'll just begin with the order. I'm not going to read the slide to you, but we'll establish- I'm not going to read the slide to you, but we'll establish the need, we'll talk about where the needs are, and there are needs. This district is very well-maintained. The oversight that this board has provided specifically through the steering committee from a facility standpoint has been incredible. And we spend time in design, we spend a lot of time in design, we spend a lot of time with the architects, construction managers, and various service providers to make sure that we get it right, that projects are completed on time and within budget. And for the last 18 years, this board has done a phenomenal job of getting projects in under budget, on time. So we'll talk about the needs. So despite of that, in spite of that, or despite that, there are needs. The building's old. The building needs some upgrades, some renovation, some repair. Even the best-maintained buildings require upgrades time to time. So we'll go through the needs and challenges, we'll go through the scope, some of the considerations, and then we'll talk about cost as we proceed. So again, I, I won't read the slides. It's posted to our website. It will continue to be posted to our website, but enrollment is growing. We anticipate enrollment will continue to grow. There are developments that are happening in town, but irrespective of those developments, we need space. Student needs are increasing. Programmatic opportunities and offerings are increasing, and it's something that we can continue to be creative on, but we're getting to the point, and some would argue we're already at the point or beyond the point, where we need more space, specifically at Brookside, Mohansick, and Crompond. Some of the service area spaces that we're providing are 200 square feet. That's way too small for OT and PT to be serviced. Music at Mohansick is on a stage. Small group instruction is in a hallway. Not proud of those pictures, but that's us getting creative to meet the needs of our students, because that's our charge as a school district, is to do our very best to meet the needs of our children. But we can do better, and we should do better. The middle school and high school have similar challenges. The cabinetry at the middle school are old. Music and art are programs that we really value, and those classrooms need a lot of attention. And it's about time we paid those classrooms some more attention, and that's what the plan is in this bond. And as I show you the picture, top left is a picture of an actual middle school music room in our district. These are all actual pictures in our school district. But what could, what could we be? And what can we imagine ourselves to be? And that's the exciting part of this project. There's a lot of excitement here because we're building something that's going to be incredible for our children, and we're going to impact every aspect of their learning, whether it's athletics, whether it's recess, whether it's band, orchestra, chorus, art, science research, or extra support that a student gets, and most importantly, their safety and security. This slide shows the overview of what we're planning to expand upon in our elementary schools. It also shows some of the renovation work that we're committing to. This is just a short floor plan of the anticipated addition at Brookside. You can see that there are two different locations for those additions, but in all, it's a six-classroom addition. And that's what the footprint would allow without disrupting other aspects of the building with minimum tie-in work, because that's often where the costs are, grow exponentially is a tie-in work, minimal tie-in work in this design. It's a really, really efficient design that was developed. And as I look at this picture of a classroom in terms of what instruction can be, it's exciting. It's the environment that our children ought to be learning in, and that's what we're looking to provide to our students. It's bright. It's conducive to learning. It's engaging. It's an exciting learning environment. At Mohansick, we're looking at a two-story addition on the back end of the building. Three classrooms on each story for a total of six classrooms. Here's what a classroom can be at Mohansick. How bright, how colorful, how happy, how conducive to learning, how inviting. That's the environment that we should want our children to learn in. At Crompond, we're looking at a two-story, six-classroom addition, three classrooms on each story. How innovative. Classrooms are equipped with various technology and flexible seating, whether it's small group work, whether it's independent work, whether we're learning from discussion, whether we're learning from each other in a classroom. It's an engaging environment for our children, and it's what they deserve. As I look at the scope at the middle school, we see all of the projects that were mentioned previously, the addition of a new turf field on the middle school, high school campus, and pickleball and basketball courts for PE and recess. The misconception that the athletic fields are just for athletics is just that, it's a misconception. Physed classes use those facilities as well. Equally as important, our middle school recess and PE classes will access the facility. Often, we're aware of circumstances that don't permit for outdoor recess, the heavy rains that are coming in tomorrow night into Wednesday. I assure you, Wednesday will be an indoor day for recess in our middle school irrespective of the temperatures, because the grass will be saturated. In a turf field environment, I couldn't give you that assurance that recess would not be outdoors, because the turf field just drains far better. So we wouldn't be worried about mud and children falling in the mud and, and all of the circumstances that result from that. The middle school is perhaps receiving the greatest upgrade, because that's a building that needs the biggest level of attention. Every area highlighted in yellow, every classroom highlighted in yellow, will experience new ceilings, new LED lighting that are more energy-efficient and brighter, new flooring, new cabinetry, new doors, new hardware. It is a, almost a complete renovation of the classroom. It's almost, everything but the walls are being renovated, and that's exciting. And some of the pictures that we showed earlier, the cabinetry, the lab tables in the science lab in need of repair, those are all part of this plan. Renovation of this space. 800 children come through this space every day. Can we give them a better environment to gather and to have luncheon? And I think the answer to that is yes. To drive the point home, we went into a science classroom. That's a lab table or a lab counter. Those are storage cabinets that we have. This bond will help us go a long way in terms of improving the experience that our students have, and every student in this district will come through this building. That's what we have, but this is what we could have. I'm happy to upgrade from that to this. A learning environment that's just so much more inviting prepares our children to learn. Makes them more excited about learning, happier to go to school. This is a home and careers room. That's currently what we have. This is what it can be. A space that's conducive to the tasks that we're asking children to perform. There's a kitchen area, there's a sewing area, there's a discussion area. And again, all students at one point or another in their middle school years will come through that classroom. At Yorktown High School, the top right of this diagram is our music wing. That will completely be renovated, including air cooling. Right now, we have window units in some of the rooms. The spaces are so large that central air conditioning is quite expensive, but that will be included in this bond. It's not something that we can do in our operating budget. And a gut renovation of our art rooms. And the very top right corner in blue of this diagram is where the new science research space will go. That's a current band room in our middle school. We can do better. That's what we're proposing. Now, I know, looking at the stringed instruments up against the wall, one could argue it's an orchestra room, but if I simply replace that with different instruments, we can say that that's a band room. So certainly, we'll equip the facility with storage of instruments, whether it's a stringed instrument, a brass, a woodwind, and acoustical panels as well to enhance sound. This is a rendering of the science research lab that we're looking to renovate. Again, another exciting space, partitioned for lab work and computer work or, or computer research. And then when we get outside, we're proposing to turf the baseball field and make that a multipurpose turf field. Field hockey and baseball would predominantly be housed there, although we can run practices of just about any other sport on that field. That's all in Proposition 1. Proposition 1 comes in at about $46 million, and that has no impact on the tax rate in Yorktown. There are no additional taxes that need to be levied for Proposition 1. But we heard from our community that we need more, and that, that they'd like more in this project. And so that's where we developed, under the leadership of our steering committee, a second proposition that can only pass if Proposition 1 passes. So Proposition 1 is everything that I just shared in this presentation, and that comes at no added additional tax rate. Proposition 2 has also been developed, and Proposition 2 has a few key elements to it. The first is a renovation of the Mohansick cafeteria. During my tenure here, we've renovated every cafeteria in the district. We've renovated Crompond, Brookside, the high school. This cafeteria in the middle school is slated to be done in Proposition 1, and as Proposition 2, the Mohansick would be the last of our cafeterias renovated. So all of our cafeterias will have been renovated in the last six or seven years. The second is a generator for critical infrastructure. These storms, similar to the one that we're expecting tomorrow evening, tend to happen more often, and we lose power as a result quite often. The infrastructure that we're looking to power through this generator would be our fire alarm systems, emergency lighting, our IT and server equipment, because if the power goes out abruptly, it really has an impact on the technology infrastructure that we have here. And certainly, the kitchen refrigeration. With each power outage, any food that spoils is a responsibility of our school district to replenish. And a critical infrastructure consideration would be our kitchen refrigeration at the high school campus, which has the largest refrigerator. And then expanding on our athletic complex on the high school, middle school campus is the final component of Proposition 2. So I won't share a rendering of the Mohansick cafeteria, but anyone who's stepped foot in Brookside or Crompond or the high school cafeteria knows what we're capable of doing and the amazing work that we're capable of doing here. And what I will share, and certainly a generator, a picture of a generator is not the most attractive and appealing slide to share, but what I will share is the athletic complex and the revision that we're looking to, to make. So with Proposition 1, you saw the field to the bottom of the screen. With Proposition 2, if Proposition 2 were to pass, that field, the baseball field with the multipurpose field gets shrunk a little bit, but it's still regulation for baseball, it's still regulation for field hockey, and there's an additional field that gets introduced. That field comes with lights and bleachers. And there's also, as part of Proposition 2, a concession area with bathrooms and an outdoor plaza. And that's quite exciting when we look at now the total athletic complex and the total experience that we'll be able to provide to our students. And it's, again, I've said it's more than athletics. There are pickleball courts and basketball courts that are also included. It's more than athletics, it's more than PE, it's more than middle school recess. Currently, we have one turf field. Teams are vying for time on those fields. And practices at times, especially in the spring, can go as late as 10:00 p.m. With three fields in operation, there's no reason why we can't have our students out at a more reasonable hour so they can begin homework and do their preparation for the following day earlier. So the other benefit to having the additional turf fields is this idea of practicing till 10:00 p.m. is not going to be as common as it is today. We'll be able to get children on fields earlier, get them home earlier to work on homework and whatever other responsibilities that they have for the upcoming day or week. So that, that's just another component that I wanted to layer in to this. There's a huge academic component here as well, and that plaza will be second to none. The example that I've shared is our gymnasium before the redesign in 2020 was probably amongst one of the worst facilities in Section 1. We invested thousands of design hours, and we now have what I would call, and I think what everyone, what the consensus is in our region, the best and nicest gymnasium of any high school in our region. I do believe that that's the consensus. We hosted the Section 1 basketball finals here. That is the, we are the only high school to have done that in recent history, in recorded history. It's been at the county center for many years, and Yorktown High School hosted that because we had the gym to do it, and everyone was impressed with what we did. We're going to take that vision and replicate it outside and come up with something that's absolutely amazing. And we will have the greatest complex in Section 1. I really do believe that, once this project is done. It's exciting. It's something that our community groups are excited about. I, I spoke to members of some local groups who are really excited about this idea of having turf complex and turf fields. So it's not just, I talked about the school piece, I talked about the academic piece, there's a community piece here as well. This will be such a value for our overall community to use, because we do allow the youth sports programs to play on our fields and to access our campuses, and every child in this district at some point, whether they're in pre-K or whether they're in high school, will be on those fields, whether it's for a pep rally, whether it's, the band is performing, whether they have a game, or whether there's an emergency safety evacuation. Every child in this district will spend time on that field at some point. And so how wonderful to be able to upgrade that experience for children. We also have some green considerations. We want to build responsibly. We want to do so with an eye toward the environment and making sure that we're conscious of our footprint and, and the impact that we're having. So these are some of the steps that we're taking. Certainly, the LED lighting is extremely important to us. And I just, I, I want to mention one thing about the athletic fields, because I forgot to mention it, as I talk about environmentally conscious and being responsible. The infill of the turf fields, quite often in history, it was recycled car tires. They refer to it as crumb rubber. That's not what we're using here. This is a virgin plastic that uses the same grade of plastic that's used in children's toys. And I want to emphasize that point from, from a safety perspective. It's the same quality of material used to make children's toys, and that's something that we're proud of, making sure that we're being responsible consumers of resources and, and to make sure that we provide the safest consumers of resources and to make sure that we provide the safest possible experience for our students. And there's also shock pads underneath these fields as well. So those are just some things I wanted to make sure that I hit home upon as we talk about environmentally responsible planning. Finally, the timeframe. So when? Well, the when is happening now. We're working with our community to make sure that everybody has the information that they need to feel comfortable casting a vote on February 13th. The vote is February 13th, and then the process is articulated on the slide. I won't read the slide to you, but the process is articulated there, and ultimately, the construction will run over a five-year period, beginning in June of 2025. And finally, cost. I referenced that Proposition 1 was just south of $46 million. That has no additional tax impact. Proposition 2 is just under $11 million. So with Proposition 1, there's no additional tax impact. Proposition 2 has a modest tax impact, and that tax impact will vary based on the assessed value of one's home. I will tell you that the average assessed value in Yorktown is $10,150, and for a home that is assessed at the average value, that would result in a $78 per year increase, or that equates to $6.50 per month for Proposition 2. And Proposition 2 can only pass if Proposition 1 is successful. So that's the information on the bond. The when, February 13th, Tuesday. The time, 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., French Hill. The library, but when you enter through the main lobby, it will be right there. It's the first room that you will see when you enter French Hill. The cost there, the impact on taxes are there as well. And so if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them at this point. I know the board has seen this presentation five or six times, maybe even more than that, but I wanted to ensure that even somebody new tuning into our board meetings has the opportunity to see this presentation.
You know, you just put a lot of pressure on the steering committee with your description of what the complex is going to be like.
I didn't do it.
You hear the work we just got? If somebody is not going to be around on February 13th, there are absentee ballots. It runs the same as a regular election, correct?
There's vote by mail, there's absentee ballots, and they can inquire with the district clerk on the process for obtaining a ballot. So our district clerk is Yvette Segal, so ysegal@yorktown.org. And you can certainly visit our district's website to access the district clerk's information, and Yvette will be able to ensure that you get a ballot.
And just one other thing, and then I'm going to pass it over to questions. High school and the middle school are both going to have art rooms totally renovated too, correct?
Yes, correct.
Because I know we don't have a lot of drawings, because these are all conceptuals, but I don't want people to miss that fact as well, correct?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. I'll go to Lisa.
Thank you for the presentation. So the first 20 or so slides were on Proposition 1, and there's no tax increase if we do, if we vote yes on Proposition 1, right?
That is completely accurate, yes.
How is that possible?
That's a great question. So I will start, and then Lisa can fill in anything that I missed. So there's a combination of factors here resulting in this project being tax neutral. There's retiring debt. So when we had our previous bond, that debt is now at the end of its life, and it's falling off, and that opens up some money within debt service to fund new debt. There's state aid that we receive on the projects, and then there's capital reserve money that the voters have authorized us to put aside. And so when you take each of those three factors and timing the project in such a way that we're borrowing strategically, results in there being no additional increase in taxes, our ability to absorb any tax increase within the footprint of our existing bond structure. Lisa, did you want to add anything? Okay, fair enough.
Thank you.
But that's a great question, Lisa, thank you. And it's one that I've received, so I appreciate you asking that question, because I'm sure there are people at home who have that very same question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I really don't have a question. I've been working on the steering committee through all of this. I'll just reiterate one of the comments you said. Our students deserve this. You know, when you look at some of the before and afters, and you look at the Home and Career Services Room, it's, you know, it's hard to believe that we're existing in that space right now. And you look at the after, all the iterations of the after pictures, it's just incredible. And how could you not learn better in these spaces? Even when you talk about, you know, middle school recess, that's a no-brainer. The students should be out there, no matter what. We need to, on a nice day, and we're talking about nice days, that our students can't even go out because of what happened the day or two before. So these are some of the things we took into consideration, and I can't say enough and emphasize enough that our students deserve this. So thank you for presenting this.
Rashmi?
So I wanted to say thank you for the presentation again, and also for doing the community presentations at different times and days of the week. So if someone has a question, would you, how would you suggest that they reach out, or do you suggest they attend one of the sessions?
So two ways. So far, what we've been doing is we fielded a lot of the questions that were raised in the survey. We fielded questions that have been sent to us or that have been asked of us and have included that in the FAQ. There will be an opportunity during each of the informational sessions at the end for anybody to ask any questions, and it's also an opportunity for us to hear feedback, not just questions. So if anyone out there has comments on the design or considerations for the steering committee to look at, there's, one option will be at the actual event, but if someone's not able to attend the event for whatever reason, they can certainly send me an email. They can also email communications@yorktown.org, and we'll make sure that the question gets routed correctly. So an email to me or an email to communications@yorktown.org, certainly a viable pathway.
Perfect, thank you.
Mike?
I don't have any questions. Just wanted to, I guess, thank everyone that's involved in this process. There's, I can't tell you how many man-hours have gone into analyzing, and this is going back years, to what we need to do, what's the best way to go about solving some of these problems. And then, once we get there, you know, the nitty-gritty down to, you know, the size of the rooms and the number of faucets. And, I mean, it's really just a tremendous amount of work that's gone into this whole process, and I want to recognize the administration and the committees that have been involved. I think we've come up with an outstanding plan. I think it hits on all the key points, and I think it's one that our community should be able to get behind and support, you know, on all fronts. That's my comment.
Thank you. Catalina? No, Pete?
So having lived through the bond, you talked about where the debt service is coming, and that goes back...
18, 19 years.
That transformed our district back then. It truly did. And now, when you look at this, at what it's going to become, it continues to where the district evolves and continues to be a showpiece. But again, it's for, the students do deserve it. So I hope the community does come out and support this, because it is needed, and it will only benefit our children and our community.
Right. Just one last comment, and that is, this project is sorely needed, but the committee spent a lot of time paring down a lot of the needs of the district in order to get to a number to make it tax neutral, because based on the survey, that was very important to the community. There is a lot of work to always be done in this district, and it's one of the things that I was so grateful for, for the community, for the capital reserve, because we were continually able to improve. But there is still, when you're dealing with buildings that are 50, 60 years old, there's a lot of work to be done in them on a constant basis. Thank you, Ron. Did you have anything else?
I think I've said enough.
Okay. We're going to go on to policy. Can we have a motion to approve the second reading and adoption of the following policies? We have 0150 HIV AIDS, 1800 Gifts from the Public, 4531 Field Trips and Excursions, and 5100 the Comprehensive Student Attendance Policy.
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are opposed? And then, we have a first read on the following policies. 1100 Public Information Program, 1130 News Media Relations, 1210 Advisory Committees, 1220 Relations with Community and Business Organizations, 1221 Relations with Parent Organizations, 1222 Relations with Student-Related Organizations, 1330 Staff Participation at Political Activities, 4532 School Volunteers, and 9645 Disclosure of Wrongful Conduct. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Mike?
Just a question on 9645 Disclosure of Wrongful Conduct. We added, or we're adding, language to the effect of if they feel comfortable, they should report such-and-such behavior. Is that recommended by our attorneys? How did we come up with that kind of language?
I believe there were statutory changes to the whistleblower law, and that's under the advice of counsel were the revisions that we made.
Okay, that's what I was looking for. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on them? Okay, thank you. Under personnel. Upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion that the following be approved. Under certified personnel, we have resignations for the purpose of retirement, additions to the substitute list. Under classified personnel, we have appointments to civil service and an unpaid leave of absence.
So move.
Second. Discussion?
Sure.
I just can't let it go by without commenting on the teachers on this list. The number of years that they've been in the district is amazing, and the majority of these teachers taught my children and were real mentors and continue to be real mentors in their lives. I couldn't let this pass without acknowledging them. So to all of those teachers, thank you so much.
Anybody else? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are opposed? Ron, did you want to say anything?
Yeah, I mean, echo what Lisa said. We have some really talented people who are departing. It's bittersweet. I've wished them well in the next stage of their lives, but it's something that will be amiss for us, and we'll certainly miss some of the talent, compassion, expertise that each of these staff members will take with them. And I won't say much more. We'll celebrate certainly our retirees come June, but this is an incredible group of teachers who are retiring. And almost 300 years of experience here in the aggregate. That's just absolutely incredible.
All right. At the business office. Resolve, the Yorktown Central School District appoint Jackie Carbone as a permanent chairperson for the district meeting bond vote on Tuesday, February 13th at no compensation. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Yorktown Central School District appoint and serve the chief election inspector for the special district meeting bond vote to be compensated at a flat rate of $325, and that is Fatima Ahmed. And resolve that the Board of Education of the Yorktown Central School District appoint the following individuals as election inspectors or alternate election inspectors for the special district meeting on February 13th to be compensated at a flat rate of $300 per day. They are listed below. Resolve that the Board of Education, Yorktown Central School District appoint Jenny Manton-Grosso and Judith Bloom to serve as Board of Registration Inspectors for the special district meeting on February 13th at a compensated rate of $16 an hour. And resolve that the Board of Education of the Yorktown Central School District appoints Jackie Carbone to serve as the Assistant Clerk for the 24 Special District Meeting Bond Vote on February 13th at no compensation.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are opposed? Someone else can take those positions whenever they want. Resolve that the Yorktown Board of Education approve the agreement between the school district and the County of Westchester for the use of electronic voting machines, including the other equipment and services for the special district meeting on February 13th. And be it further resolved that the Board President is hereby authorized to execute such agreement, a copy of which is incorporated by reference within the minutes of this meeting.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are opposed? Health and Welfare, a motion to approve the following contract for health and welfare services provided to resident pupils attending non-public schools in other districts for the 23, 24 school year, and this one is for Dobbs Ferry.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are opposed? And then, we have a budget transfer, and a motion to approve the budget transfer that's listed below.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are opposed? People Personnel, a motion to arrange the placements as of January 8, 2024.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are opposed? And gifts, grants, and donations. A motion to accept with gratitude the following gifts, grants, and donations. For the Carol Jacobson 3rd Grade Grant, $100 from Jeffrey and Diane Barber, and Mohansick complimentary virtual author visit presented by the authors Jackie Davis and David Solman. Technology Department, an HP color laser jet printer, a MacBook Pro, an iPad Pro from Peggy Thompson. And at the Yorktown Athletics, $1,500 from the Giants Foundation to support the girls' flag football program.
So move. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are opposed? Thank you very much. We're up to our board comments. Peter?
I'm good.
Catalina?
I just want to acknowledge, on December 18th, we were unable to be present for our board meeting, and I, Mrs. Scarella's, Scarelli's Middle School Special Education class made everybody this ornament with our name, and I just thought everybody should see it, since they weren't able to come today. So I have it up on my tree, and I know they work a shop as well, and they sew, so I just wanted to say thank you to that class.
Thank you. Mike?
Just, there's a lot of exciting things going on. It's a great time of the year, and I'm looking forward to continuing the bond discussions and what that brings for the future.
Terrific. Rashmi?
Yeah, I love the ornament, and I know they presented to us last year, and it was phenomenal. I did promise to support them this year, but that didn't work out with the weather. Perhaps we can bring them back, Dr. Hatter, you know, at a suitable time this year to, you know, just tell us what they're working on, something new, exciting. We would love to see them. But thank you. And this is beautiful. Thank you.
Cheryl?
I'm good, thank you.
Lisa?
I'm good, thanks.
Okay. Again, the Mohansick students were amazing, and again, I'll say what Lisa says every time, their public speaking skills are incredible even at their young age. And I encourage everyone to find a time to see one of the bond presentations. Some are virtual, so you don't have to leave your home, and Ron has been nice to put it at different times of the day, so if you're working or if you're home, there's, should be an opportunity. When will they, where will they be posted, on our website?
They'll be blasted to the community tomorrow morning. It'll be a letter that speaks to the bond, and the dates and times, we'll have it on our website. It'll be available, readily available. But we'll blast it out to the community. We'll also work with local news media to get the word out, as well as the town.
Terrific.
Thank you. We're up to public comment, anybody? Nope? Ron, did you release anything? Nope. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
So move, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.